Call this meeting door and I'm gonna ask Mr. Johnson if you want to give him the attention.
Father, we thank you again for allowing us to come together. Pleased that you can let us be together once again. We ask you to look down upon us tonight with wisdom and knowledge to make the right decision as best that we can for our community. We ask you to guide us. Now, God, we ask you, and we thank you for the rain today because you know what we need. We ask you to bless this state, this state Douglas on the battlefield, safety, care, and I will pray. Amen.
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 Let's stand the flag of our nation.
Let's raise this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen and ladies, the agenda is printed before you. Are there any modifications to the agenda? Hearing none, I entertain a motion that we approve the agenda as printed.
So move.
The motion is made by Mr. Rayme and seconded by Mr. Johnson down there that we approve the printed agenda. Any further discussion about that? Hearing none, I call for the vote. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, our work is cut out for us. Mr. Chief Williams, you're up first.
Do you want me to present again or do you wanna...
You sent us a letter. I thought maybe you were going over your stuff.
Yes. Do you want me to read the letter again?
I don't know what you... It's your presentation. You make like you want to.
Alright. I'm coming to the council respectfully, asking for an increase in pay for officers. They had got a, I think the last time they got a raise was Tommy Purcher was still on the council. And I sent each one of you a letter and told you how Georgia ranks in the nation and that's just some facts in that letter about the way law enforcement has evolved and the way it's changed. And I wanna, I just wanna tell you, it's kinda like I'm having a hard time... Law enforcement is different than any other occupation. Well, not any other, but a lot of occupations because you have to meet certain criteria. You have to go through specialized training. And in the world today, you've got to have a clean criminal history. You, number one, you've got to be able to pass a drug test. That's harder for most people. It's kinda like, the way this thing has evolved is kinda like the car business. And I mention this in my letter. You've got Woody Foltzman and Paul Steepin. They sell the same product. They're selling the same product. So am I, so is Backstreet, so is Alan, so is Douglas, so is McCray. Anybody around us is selling the same product that I am. Chevrolet as a whole offers incentives and deals and rebates and stuff like that. So do we. We offer benefits package, we offer insurance, we offer GMA retirement, so do these other places. Okay? The thing that sets it apart, most of the time, is what that specific dealer can do for you. And that's where you, that's nine times out of ten, that's where you go. If it's a good fit for you, that's the dealer you use. Where the way law enforcement has evolved and what I learned at the Chiefs Association training back in January is, it depends on what incentive you can offer. And I know that we are strapped and I know that the city doesn't have a lot of money to, you know, just take and go with. But here's what I'm proposing. The starting pay is currently fifteen dollars an hour for somebody straight out of the academy. That's mandated. I am asking to raise that to eighteen dollars an hour for starting out and then evaluations of the current officers and do a percentage raise on them. I'm also asking for an incentive on recruiting if a current officer recruits another person to come to the police department. If that person is not mandated, which means that they're not post-certified, then if I feel like that person's a candidate and I wanna send them to mandate training, the, if that officer completes mandate training, comes out, is a good fit for our department, then you reward the officer that recruited them with a five hundred dollar bonus. If the candidate is already post-certified and they stay for six months and are a good employee, then that employee that recruited them will get seven hundred and fifty dollar bonus. And I'm requesting also that if we hire a new officer and that officer stays for a period of eighteen months, well, if we hire a new officer, they get a two thousand dollar sign-on bonus. If they stay eighteen months, then they don't have to pay that two thousand dollars back. If they don't stay for whatever reason, they must pay back or reimburse the city that two thousand dollars. That's my spiel on that. And I also want you to consider this administrative cap that we have discussed and it would take a load off of me and help me do evaluations and help me rewrite the policy. Not rewrite it, but update it to where it needs to be. Our policy has not been updated since 2007. Wayne Fountain was still the mayor when that policy manual was signed off on. The only policy that I have updated to get current, I did, I did do the use of force policy because it had to be, something had to be done with it, just to keep it up.
If I may object, you're trying to eliminate your old liabilities from every way around, you know?
Yes, yes. By the policy, 'cause y'all know what we did fifteen years ago. Times change and you have to constantly update that policy to keep up with everything else, current legislation and that kind of stuff. But that's my spiel.
Chief, uh, questions? Uh, here. With the raise, if this is approved and the bonuses, how, and then hiring a new man at salary discussed already, will you still have enough in budget money to be able to hire two or three officers?
I would have enough to hire two. I would have enough to hire two.
Okay. Even with all of that?
Yes. The third officer that I'm currently short, the, not all of the salary, some of that salary is reimbursed by the Board of Education.
Yeah.
When that officer's not at the school, the city is, you know, liable for that cost.
Yeah, that's the reason.
But as long as school's in session or they're at a school-related event or anything that the school requests, then the Board of Education reimburses that salary. Any other questions? Thank you for your consideration.
Is there any motion on the floor or whether to the chief's presentation?
I'll make a motion that we do what the chief asked us.
Safer.
There's an entire, okay, there's been a motion made on the floor and a second to approve the chief's presentation. That's, I assume that that's, we'll get to that in a minute. Okay, now to discuss about is that, starting salaries and bonuses and the entire package?
I say, with respect to Ken, I would like to get the consensus of the council in the motion to accept some type of bonus and the incentives and as far as the pay increases, increase the starting pay and allow him and his new man to look at the evaluations and raises on the current.
Does this motion include hiring the new man at salary discussed and his presentation?
Yes.
And this salary that we're looking at here from one thing to another, if that takes place now, you know, we've been discussing about when you do the budget, that you were talking about doing mayor raises and all, does that, do that take any consideration with that?
If, I don't know that, y'all knew this thing, this is not a one-man shovel. But if you put his recommendation to put the starting salary, see, that's gonna, most of your officers are making seventy dollars an hour. So that's gonna immediately put them to eighteen if that's the starting salary, but you're gonna leave those officers at the, and you've got some who's making less. Now, that's gonna, everybody's gonna be at eighteen dollars an hour. What are you gonna do there? Another thing, huh?
May I call Ken back to the podium?
Yes, Ken commented on that.
Um, I would like to say that I think I have, I think I could, it would take me just a minute, but I have one officer who has been here twenty-five years that's making, I don't know if I need to discuss.
Twenty dollars an hour.
I would be pissed at people's stuff, but he's making, he's making over seventeen dollars an hour.
He's making twenty dollars an hour.
I got two that are making close to seventeen, everybody else is fifteen, except the investigators. I'm talking about patrol officers.
Hourly employees, not hourly employees.
Hourly employees, yes. So I think I've got three that are over the seventeen dollar mark.
I'm always in favor of helping everybody and all we can and you'll find me there. Now, I talked to the sheriff a little bit about this process and he tells me that a lot of his patrol has been on the road for a good while, between fifteen and sixteen. So I hope, I reckon we're gonna be able to hire everyone there. You won't have to worry about finding people. I think you always can come down here.
That's the, that's the object. I'm asking for that. If, if I don't get it, I hope we can meet somewhere. Well, I just, I had an officer. We seen him at school. We got him trained, which now, I will say, the sheriff worked with me good on that because he reimbursed the training.
Let me ask.
But that man left me and went to the sheriff's office.
Let me ask you this. Can we put what's on the, address what's on the agenda and then you and that, that man come back to council and then talk about that?
Yes, that's what I would like to do. I would like to, let's say the starting pay is gonna, I'm not talking about moving anybody tonight except starting pay. Give me a chance to get this man in here, let's evaluate these people, let's see who needs what and then do a percentage above that. That's what I'm asking.
So if I understand right, you're asking, let's deal with the man tonight, brother, then going through all of this and let's deal with him. And this is something for us to, boy, let's ponder on and look and come back and let's talk about it.
Well, do me a favor and help me in trying to keep things in order right here. We've got a motion to handle this, to handle this complete package only one mouthful of water. Do me a favor and let's kill this motion so we can start over.
Yes.
All in favor of the motion on the floor, just the entire package, you've read everything. Would you, remember, I've asked you to kill this motion. Would you raise your right hand or left hand or whatever you wanna do? No, you're not for it. I said all in favor of it, I ask you to...
Oh, you said to kill it.
No, and they got a motion to do it, to pass this. They made a motion that we do the whole package. All in favor, raise your hand. No? Oh, you, for the whole package? I've asked you to...
These people putting their lives on the line.
Well, that's not what we just did.
I know.
What John just said and the chief just said, let's employ the man and then let him get in here and do the rest of this package. So kill this for me, please. All in favor of it, raise your hand. Don't anybody raise your hand. All in favor of killing this motion, raise your hand.
All in favor of killing this.
Now then, now we've got that killed. Now go back and let's wait the motion again about one man.
I make a motion that we do what's on the agenda, item number one, to hire his administrative cap. That's the salary we talked about.
Safer.
Votes have been made, seconded and thirtied. Okay, now we've got a motion on the floor. We discussing this?
Yes, it is. I am in support of hiring the man. I do like about everything that's there. The only thing that I do not support is furnishing a vehicle to go to Blackshire. Furnishing a vehicle to go there. He could be like any other businessman. He can drive himself to, in a private car, to Hazlehurst, get in a police car, do his job and then drive home like any other businessman. We have to get our memory back too. We did this one time before where we furnished a vehicle with somebody and that didn't turn out well.
You're talking about two different type of men and you're also talking about a man who's on the call twenty-four seven.
Is he not gonna arrest anybody or police duties in Blackshire?
That's an incentive that all departments are going to.
Yes, well, Mr. Rayme, if I could just give you a little bit of rebuttal on that. If you go to Gil Street, right now, on Gil Street, when you turn off the 341 on the Gil, second house on the left, you're gonna see a Coffee County Patrol car there. That's being gossiped.
Yeah.
Alright. Go over here on Carrier Drive, you're gonna see a Telfair County.
Exactly.
Unit, that's Jose Zamora. Go out on the highway, out here past Sandy Trading, most on the left, you're gonna see another Telfair County Sheriff's Office vehicle. That's a deputy from Telfair.
These are right.
Right over here on Currie Street, there's gonna be, at the Garrett's place, you're gonna see a Coffee County Patrol car. That's a, that's just incentives, that's the way this thing has evolved. If you want people to come, you've got to give them some incentive.
I understand that. I understand that I was a businessman, I'd drive my vehicle to where it goes and then I pick up the other one. I just can't support the car.
Any further discussion? Okay, let's proceed with this. I have agonized over this, wait, stay up here, we get through intentions, any further manipulation. I've agonized over, Rayme, what you're talking about a little and other things. But in talking with the chief, we've got a young chief that's got a lot more enforcement. He was sheriff's business for a number of years. And when we, when the former chief retired, this young man came in and I'll have to admit that it's been real nice working with him and I've enjoyed that. Also, we've got a council that, for the liaison to the police department, that's got extensive police experience. And I don't have any police experience unless you talk to my boys. When I was raising them and I was a pretty good policeman and they got arrested quite often and I was a pretty good disciplinarian. But anyway, as far as police knowledge and experience, I don't have it and I've been told that. I've been told there, we know what this is and the chief has been at the very seminars where these people are working and playing in this knowledge. So in an effort of, trying to say that I as mayor, I don't know everything and I knowledge that and I don't know a lot about police stuff, where I have committed to the chief and to Councilman Bloodworth down there that I'm going to support their quest and I have been assured that your questions are gonna be answered in three, four, five months. You're gonna come to us and apologize for even questioning what we're doing. So, but I've committed to helping these folks to do what they're trying to do. But I want the record to reflect, Madam Clerk, that it's against my better judgment because if I don't have police experience, I'm gonna yield to them and I'm gonna see if they can prove me wrong and I hope the hell they do. But that's where I am, I want the record to reflect that.
Are we gonna give a apology?
Huh?
I think we're gonna give a apology, yeah.
We'll talk about it a little bit after three months.
I got you.
Alright, any further discussion? Alright, all in favor of employing the man? And I guess this includes, this includes the, they say that the package won't work because a man can't do this unless he furnished a car to drive. You got an hour to drive into Hazlehurst and an hour to drive back, a little better.
We don't have any policy as for employees driving cars out of the city.
Well, hold on, she talked to the insurance, the insurance company.
It is covered, yeah, it's covered. I mean, we're under a fleet policy, we're under a fleet policy. And any city employee can take any city vehicle and go anywhere they want to, okay?
Hold on, y'all, you have to put up your ears, not put your...
Got it here then.
Okay, alright. Alright, any further discussion?
Again, I want to say that I support every lane except for the car and I can't vote for it because of that, if it's tied in there.
Okay, any further discussion? Alright, all in favor of the motion, Regger Pan? Alright, I didn't say which one, Johnson. So it appears that Bloodworth, Leggett, Johnson and Stone is voting in favor of the motion. All opposed? Mr. Rayme is opposed. Then the record is reflected, it's passed and you have the right to employ the man and I'm expecting great things.
Thank you.
Alright, let's move on. Roundabouts, I guess that's mine. You've got the mouth in front of you, pardon?
Yes.
You've got the mouth in front of you and I noticed that he told me that he was sending and I called and I couldn't get ahold of him and say, "Doom." That he's also doing thermoplastic striping in all entrances and all four directions coming to this roundabout. He wants, what you've seen here, recommended we do that. And then also, the state is gonna provide us some additional signage that we will not have to pay for just in that roundabout where it's functioning correctly and somebody might tear it all the hell every time you turn around. So that, and he's suggested, Joey Hires has done one or two of these that he's familiar with. I haven't seen it, but I don't, he told me.
That looks good.
So he told me before we proceed with this, all the signage and stuff he'd help me with, I'll have to get prices on the thermoplastic, but that is, I need to get a price from Joey Hires. Now, also what I'm going to do, I believe my buddy and County Commissioner James Benjamin can do this with a little instruction and I may give Benjamin a chance to bid on it.
Now, according to the email that Mayor Stone forwarded to me, the actual photograph that you're seeing is the roundabout in which we heat.
It's the one in the airport. I haven't looked at it lately.
Can I ask what thermoplastic is?
Yeah. What?
Can I ask what the thermoplastic, what is that?
Who's really familiar with it? I am to a degree. Who's really knowledgeable on thermoplastic?
I'm just, I don't...
It's, you've been familiar with reflector plank that shines in the dark or it's almost just lost and you put a, you put a fill into the pane that you apply and it's almost sparkling reflect...
Glass beads.
What? It's glass beads. Glass beads or whatever, in other words, it really, it lights it up. It really lights it up. And it's, not that it wears well, cars won't wear off it as quick and it'll last longer, but it's expensive as hell. But now, Steve, you're supposed to be learning how to apply that, right? Have you, how far have you gotten with it?
I know what we got currently is no good and we're searching getting some new technology on thermoplastic.
It's an expensive process and everybody tells me that the land, normally you need to get somebody that's sufficiently equipped and handled to do it. But I've asked Steve, he's always been through about anything I've asked him to try to do, to try to see that it's expensive and we need to do a good bit of it around in different places. And we've got a machine that's not a real automated machine, but we've got somebody we can do this work with if Mr. Falk can get equipped and attend and he can do it. So we're gonna work in that direction.
Yeah, I've been talking to Sharon Williams currently about it, so we're looking for the best.
Have you ever applied a COA? Have you ever used it? Okay, alright. Okay, so at any rate, we've got us a plan, we've got a suggestion, it's from DLT.
I got a question if, is there any way to get a better lighting out there for it too?
Well, every time you put a light, it shines right, this, it's just lighting in this way and some lighting is a...
Somebody hauls or you blind it in.
Yeah, lighting is a problem.
It still is.
So I think they're trying to light it up with all these, inside the circle is where Rod is going to provide us some reflective signage that'll shine real good. So I'm hoping, we'll see. It needs light, that's for sure. But at least now with this, when they hit it, they won't tear the car to pieces. They've basically sliced it in there a little bit, but maybe it'll quit tearing it all to pieces. And now, this is gonna be right expensive now, y'all. It's not going to cheap.
But, Mr. Mayor, I would like to say that it's time Haysworth had something that'll look good. Everything we've had has looked like rinky-dinky. It's just sewn together and we get it in there and it just tears out.
This will...
This looks good.
Alright, okay. Any other comments about it? I will begin to, with your permission, I'll not only get with Joey, who's, Rob says has done a good job with this, I'm gonna probably give James Benjamin a chance to look at it and see if he can come up with it and maybe go to Richmond Hill. But at any rate, we'll proceed trying to get that thing fixed. And another thing too, Bernie, somehow or another, you and I've got to get the insurance company getting what they need to send us our money. And you've been telling me to do that, but now I'm telling you to help me.
What am I supposed to do?
Get it done.
In other words, never mind.
Well, I didn't want it then, then we didn't want to spend the money because I knew how we were gonna spend it.
Right.
Now we know how we're gonna spend it now with the money. Alright, so, y'all got any more, anything else to say about that? I would be glad to get that added behind us. Okay, Mr. Attorney, let's talk about the State Patrol, GMA's long-term financing for the State Patrol project.
This is, for information purposes, a State Patrol project.
Alright, everybody listen, one at a time.
Getting in the short road now for refinancing and we've had construction on Westside Bank. The long-term financing, you recall, was approved by the council over a year ago to be done through GMA. And it's a process, kinda like a bond process, that you have to do, there's certain formalities you have to fulfill with public hearing, etc. You will see in the ledger next week, there'll be published a notice of public sale. That'll be published February 24th. That is part of the process that you have to go through to get GMA financed. In fact, it'll be sold to GMA, leased back to the city. Then, March the 3rd, there will be a publication of a notice of a public hearing. That will run March the 3rd and March 10th, the two weeks. They will have a public hearing at 10:00 a.m. on March 18th, which is a regular scheduled city council meeting. They'll have a public hearing at 10:00 a.m. here in City Hall for any institute of the public who wants to come in and discuss it. I mean, you'll open bids at 10:00 a.m., excuse me, you open bids at 10:00 a.m. The notice of public, the notice of public sale is the invitation to give bids, Bernie to have a bid form and everything for them to pick up.
Certified that this is bid to financial institutions?
It's a bid to buy the property, but you turn and release it back. I would do the same thing GMA's gonna do. Nobody's gonna do that, but you have to give a public opportunity to do it. So that's what the first notice is you'll see next week. Then the second notice is for the two weeks is a notice of public hearing. Then on the March 18th meeting at 10:00 a.m. will have the opening of the bids. Then at the regular meeting that night at 6 o'clock, the first thing on the agenda will be conducting a public hearing that's gonna have ties. So the public can come in and comment, make whatever comment they want to. After hearing the public comments, if any, then the resolution will be presented to be passed for the project with the GMA partners. So y'all see these notices in the ledger developed and that's what's going on.
Does the police never come to you?
I was gonna give you a complete...
And initially, this thing was set up for tenure and the former commissioner, who's now retired and moved on, we've got a new commissioner I've met. we've got a new commissioner. I've met him. Uh, he, uh, he's from originally, Georgia. But, um, and being on the safe side, we've decided to move this to a fifteen-year term. The long-term financing, we put in, but it's a fifteen-year look for the loop. I hope that he's, he, I think he's, he's been given that information.
Was it, is it the final term sheet?
Yeah, yeah.
Whatever's in the final, final term sheet for the new...
Final, right. Okay, anything else, uh, about that, uh, Mr. Attorney?
That's all.
Alright, um, how about discussing your information on the alcohol, uh, package...
Actually, what we'll be doing tonight is the first reading of two...